Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting on November 24th, 2014, with Board of Education. Mr. Tepper, if you'd please call roll.
Mrs. Disinger.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take note of the exits. We have one here to my right, your left, one in the back of the room, and the two over here on the side. Can I have a motion to adopt agenda, please?
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mrs. Disinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Approval of minutes, first 3.1 approval of the minutes from the Policy Committee meeting on October 8th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Disinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. And 3.2 approval of our meeting from the regular meeting on October 27th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Disinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Item 4.1, correspondence. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Freeman in Board of Education. We received a number of correspondence. First of all, I'd just like to share that we've discussed quite a bit the AP work that our students and our staff did earlier, and I received the, or we received as a Board of Education, a certificate from AP for being on their honor roll for their fifth consecutive year. As well as, we've received a number of correspondence via email and other forms in regards to our recent passage of our bond issue. I would like to maybe move that down to a quick update under District Updates, under number six, although it's not listed, I can share it there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Tepper?
Yeah, we received a, I guess, the annual meeting notice for the Texas Department of the Council meeting, the TIF meeting with the Township is going to be December 4th at 1:30. We kind of talk about the history, the plans, everything related to that TIF program. Somebody from the county will also be there. So I think Mr. Heiss is going to attend as well.
Great, thank you. I know I received, and I suspect I'm not alone, other members of the Board received some anonymous correspondence. For those of you, I suspect the author of that correspondence isn't here today, but we're actually pretty open. We'll, we'll talk to you, we'll accept emails, we'll meet with you. But anonymous correspondence, and at least for me, generally finds its way pretty quickly in the trash can. If you care to share your views with us, I would recommend you, you do so, but not anonymously. It just doesn't get as much play as you might think. If anybody else has anything they want to add to that, that's fine, but anyhow, that's it on correspondence, otherwise. Item 4.2, procedure for public commentary. This is not a public meeting, but is a meeting held in public. We do welcome comments from our public, and if you care to address us in public commentary, which will be here in a moment, please fill out a green card. Anybody care to do so? I do have one. All right, then, on public commentary, we'll give you five minutes to address us, and Mr. Brett LeBar, please.
My name's Brett LeBar, and my wife and I have been residents of Anderson Township for 24 years. We've raised two sons here, and I'd like to make a few brief comments about Common Core tonight. I'll just start with a short parable. There was a father who wanted to buy a used car for his high school daughter to get to school and to get back and forth to a part-time job. He bought her a Pinto, and time he learned it wasn't a good car. He was approached by a car dealer who said he had a new kind of car to sell him that would be much better. The dealer said it was being designed by a group of car experts and wasn't finished yet, but if he'd buy one sight unseen, he'd qualify for a big cash rebate. The father signed the papers and waited for his new car. It was called a Yugo. While there's some humor in this story, I don't think there's much humor in the situation we're in with Common Core. Our prior Ohio education standards weren't rigorous enough. When Ohio was approached by the U.S. Department of Education and bribed with race-to-the-top funds, our state signed up for Common Core standards even though they hadn't been written yet. It was assumed the National Design Committee would do a good job. And besides, Ohio was desperate for the money. Some school administrators now defend Common Core by saying it would be expensive and confusing to switch to new standards. They want us to keep the Yugo and pour more money into it. This is not a good investment. Here's why. I've got seven points. Number one, Common Core standards are not based on research and they include concepts that are not developmentally appropriate. Number two, Common Core standards have never been tested or proven anywhere. Number three, Common Core standards are not competitive globally. The only English-language arts expert and the only mathematician on the validation committee, both refused to sign off on Common Core standards because they weren't rigorous enough. There were some states that had competitive standards before Common Core, Massachusetts and also California and Indiana, but even those states traded in their high-quality standards to get federal race-to-the-top dollars. Number four, the Common Core design team didn't have the expertise to develop standards. No one on the design team had ever developed standards before, and no K-12 teachers were included on the team. Number five, Common Core standards are copyrighted and can't be changed. Even in areas where they are obviously weak or flawed, they can't be modified. Randy Weingarten, President of the American Federation of Teachers, was interviewed on MSNBC and was asked, "How is it that Common Core learning standards were developed for K-3 children without including even one early childhood educator in the process?" To which she replied, quote, "Standards are only meaningful once you see them in practice. That's why so many of us question why the National Governance Association and the Council of Chief State School Officers copyrighted them rather than encouraging change and adjustment as educators saw the standards work in practice. The K-2 standards seem developmentally inappropriate for our youngest children, and educators and parents report that they are having a disproportionately negative impact on our younger students," unquote. Number six, teacher support for Common Core is plummeting. A national survey showed that approval for Common Core among teachers dropped from 76% to 46% in just one year. And finally, number seven, Common Core compromises the privacy of individual student data. Due to Common Core, our children's private, personally identifiable information is being sent without parental permission outside of Ohio to the U.S. Department of Education, which can then give it to any agency or private company it chooses. To summarize, Common Core standards weren't based on research, weren't tested, aren't competitive, can't be changed, have low teacher approval, and compromise the privacy of our children's data. For all of these reasons, Ohio should repeal and replace Common Core. Right now, there's a bill in the Ohio House of Representatives, Sub-House Bill 597, that would repeal Common Core standards and replace them with tested, proven, globally competitive Massachusetts standards. I call on you as our elected representatives to take a stand on this issue by supporting House Bill 597 for the repeal and replacement of Common Core. We can do much better for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBar. Item 6.1, our, did you want to do your update first, or Christine?
Let me just give a quick update to the Board in regards to, first of all, let me begin by saying I want to thank our community for their support of our bond issue, our recent bond issue earlier this month. And again, back to communication, and we received a lot of very positive comments in regards to moving forward with our projects. This is the first time since our November 4th election that I've had the opportunity to thank our community and like to do that publicly. Through their support and their dedication, we are now able to extensively renovate eight of our nine buildings. We're going to build a new Wilson Elementary. We're going to transform, begin to transform our, and improve our learning environments across the board, and I thank the community for helping us with those efforts. I also want to go as far as saying that, since, since November 4th, it's been a whirlwind for, for myself, for Rick and Ray in particular, and Ray and I have met on a number of occasions with our design firm. We've taken tours of our buildings again, looking at things in much, much more detail. Had several meetings, and are beginning our planning sessions in regards to our, what we're calling our building visionary vision teams in regards to moving forward with the process. Each of our building's administrators have a team of teachers, which also include community members as well, to talk about our vision of increased teaching and learning and what we can do with our facilities to help that. With that, we've already had a couple of those meetings, and the most of the rest of those meetings have been scheduled to occur here within a week or so to begin. I think I put an update in the Board with some of those dates, and I'm going to encourage the Board members to attend if you can, at least one of those, to see, and see the process and how we're doing that. I know that SSOE, our design firm, and their professionals are working right now to set up some things, such as surveying all of our, the work that we're going to be done, doing soil samples, and even going as far as testing some of the soils over in the Wilson area for possible geothermal heat in that particular building. With regards to that, if it's possible, we'd like to try to look at doing that, if the cost is right. The payback on that is much, much better than it ever has been in the past, and the cost of doing that isn't all that much different than just conventional heating and air conditioning as well. So we're looking at that as well. So I just want to say again, thank you to our community, thank you for everything that's going, that we've got going on with our team. We're working hard, and the goal is, is to begin some of our projects as early as this spring. We've identified some of the things that are kind of some standalone projects that we're going to be able to get right off, kicked right off and get going, where some of the larger design and the plan is going to take a little longer. We're hoping to have that design work done by early spring, maybe early, by spring and early summer to get that up and going as well. So again, thank you, community, and I hope to, on a monthly basis, give you at least a short update to the Board and to our community. Erica Daggett, our Communications Coordinator, shared with the Cabinet today a communication plan that we're going to begin to put into place in regards to keeping our community informed of what's happening at each of our buildings as we move forward. It will not only be web-based, but it'll be, it will also be email-based and those types of things as well, so that we can get that information out as much as we can to try to keep our, our community informed. So thank you for the opportunity. And what, I'd now like to move to the second part of this agenda item, which is an update on our technology efforts. Yes, I'm sorry. Right ahead.
I just want to know if you could just briefly touch on where we are in securing the owner's rep for the projects?
Oh, actually, Ray attended, and Ray can talk about that a little bit as well. He attended a meeting with Brickar and Eckler just a few days ago.
Went up to Columbus last Wednesday and went with Brickar and Eckler and a couple of attorneys up there and talked about the process. They're putting together a template for us to use to issue an RFD for, for the owner's rep. So it would be my hope that either the organizational meeting, or later than, right in January, being a bridge agreement to the Board for the owner's rep. They're being pretty aggressive, I think, it's reported, to get that role filled out pretty quickly.
Thanks.
At the Capitol Conference, I attended a couple sessions where they were just passionate about how important the owner's rep is and what the cost savings to the district.
You're the only one looking out for us.
Yeah.
We actually been talking to probably a dozen or so different districts, and King was saying.
Thank you. Good question. Technology update, and as Christine and I and Natasha were, were talking over the last few days, especially today, in regards to how much entwined our technology efforts are with curriculum. And so part of this presentation is going to be talking about that, and then our efforts of where we've been and where we're going, so. Christine?
Well, first of all, congratulations to everyone for all the efforts. It's really an exciting time, and as with transformation, it's kind of a great segue to technology. Technology in general is transformative. Changes the way we do things, changes the way we learn, we teach, and the way we live every single day. So first, we're going to talk, watch a short video about creating a world of learning at Forest Hills, and then I'll talk a little bit about Natasha and I and why we're doing this together.
Potential. It is in all of us, yet achieved by so few. But what if that was to change? What if the seed that was in every child was carefully watered and nurtured and strengthened and developed in an all-embracing world of learning until the child's full, complete, and total potential had been realized? This world of learning is beginning to take shape today, where learners are moving from the passenger seat into the driver's seat, where learning agents collaborate with learners to address their overall needs as people, not just the academic needs of a student, where learning experiences are no longer defined by boundaries of architecture and geography, but by boundaries of the mind, boundaries of technology, and boundaries of This world of learning is emerging today, where academic accomplishments are owned by the student, not the system, where the system itself is organic and alive, moving and bending and reacting in ways it never did before, where learners can develop deep and lasting knowledge that will enable them to thrive, not for a day, not for a season, but for a lifetime.
So one of the reasons today that I'm presenting with Natasha is that in the past, a technology update would have been infrastructure, it would have been access points, it would have been a lot of words that people don't understand and don't really care to understand but know they're important. So, but what I'm talking about today is learning, because learning has changed, and technology has facilitated that change. And the reality of it is, technology and curriculum, even though we're separate departments, we're so intermeshed. What I do supports what they do in Student Services, what they do in the Curriculum Department, and that's really what this is all about. So we're going to touch about, on the future of learning, the future of learning that we hope to see at Forest Hills. I'm going to tell you the things that we've done and how the technology has supported it, and a little bit of the other stuff that I said normally we would have talked about. I'll touch on that a little bit. Bottom left, if you click on the arrow, it's the world's smallest arrow when you're 300 feet away from it.
There we go.
So the future of learning is flexible. Oh, just back arrow one more.
It's going to be a lot of talk.
And flexible not just in that you can do it anywhere, which you can. Learning is 24/7 now. You can do it in your bed, you can do it in your yard, as you see here, but even in the classroom space, we want to look for flexibility. And as we move forward with learning, we want flexible furniture, we want flexible environments. And as you can see there, and I don't know if you can see it very well, but all of those desks are on wheels. Wheels have a purpose in education, and the purpose is, you can meet in a small group with two people, four people, 10 people, whatever, and you can change in 30 seconds or less and move into a new size group. Everybody doesn't have to work on the same thing at the same time, and that's part of how learning's changing. As you can see in the middle, we have students that have taken a TV, they're hooked up, and they could be Skyping or having a video conference with someone in the room across the way, or all the way across the globe, and technology lends itself to doing that. The future of learning is authentic. This is our Nagel Tech Squad. They're taking apart a computer because the computer was broken. What they're doing is they're fixing it, and then it's going to go back into circulation. They've learned how to fix a computer, and it's an authentic way to be able to do something that actually helps our environment. They took, they fixed the computer, it goes back into circulation, and they had a real-life problem-solving experience and learned along the way. And as you can see, I'm just pointing out with the arrows there in that last slide. It's okay. There were also casters or wheels on the bottom of the furniture. That's in the Nagel Learning Commons. So we've already started with that flexible concept. The future of learning is collaborative. We all know this, and especially you, in the business world, in any world today, it is collaborative. As you can see on the right, that's from Kettering Fairmont, and it's a 21st century room. All of the, you can see again, wheels, casters, small groups, and if you could see the two screens, they're doing different things. Kids are collaborating together, those are smart boards on wheels, those are wheels with tables on, or, excuse me, tables with wheels, chairs with wheels. Everything is flexible. And the teacher, as you can see, is walking around, actually facilitating. She's not standing in front and then lecturing. She's actually working and letting everybody work holistically on their project. On the left, you can see that is our Turpin Tech Squad. We also have flexible furniture for them. There's a table, and then you also have the chairs that are on wheels. There's a monitor on the end that anybody that is around that table can hook into, so a student can show their work to their peers or to their instructor, or the instructor, as is shown here, is showing, actually a motherboard's up on the screen, and then the kids are learning how to take apart that computer. The future, future of learning is global and connected, and this is probably one of the most important components, and I'm sure you've heard it ad nauseam, but here we have Twitter feeds, and on the left, it's a little bit cut off, but we have our teachers, we have kids that are actually tweeting out about their experiences in their classrooms, and not just to themselves, they're connecting with other sixth-grade classrooms across the globe. And we have Michigan and Missouri, I just pointed that out because we have a teacher there that's from Michigan, and then Mr. Devine's class, he talks about doing a mystery Skype in Missouri. So we're going to watch a short video, and he can talk about it firsthand.
Hi, I'm Brian Devine. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Summit Elementary, and very excited and passionate about the one-to-one device program that started in sixth grade last January when kids were allowed to bring their own devices. Just in the short time, really in a year's time, I've seen so much growth in my students, which is exciting for me. The kids come to school excited. I mean, they, they get their devices and they log on a SchoolG, and the first thing they're checking is the agenda and seeing what the day sets forth. As a sixth-grade team, we're trying really hard to go paperless in as many areas as we can, and to try to build on the kids' excitement and passion. So it's commonplace to have those devices up and running throughout the day in all the different classrooms. I'm seeing the change in the kids. You know, they no longer are thinking of themselves just as Room 233, but they're becoming connected with other classrooms, not even in our school, but globally. We've participated in different things, like a mystery Skype, which is where we try to figure out where the other school we're Skyping with is located, and talk about a great way for collaboration with our students and being able to be connected with others. In sixth grade, we started a program called Connect and Learn, which is where we have a group of classrooms throughout North America that are connected, and with our Twitter Classroom account, the kids can go throughout the day and tweet out different things that are taking place in the classroom. And the true power there is being able to see what's going on in other classes throughout the world. Also, it gives us a forum for our kids to have an authentic audience. They can now have their writing and their blog entries seen by other kids that otherwise would have never, ever seen it. It's amazing how it's starting to become seamless, too. The kids are starting to become very efficient with their devices, and they are becoming efficient with the tools that they use. It's no longer, you know, a teacher standing there telling them, "This is what you need to do," but the kids themselves are thinking through it and thinking, "Okay, what would be the best tool for our learning here? What do we need to use?" And oftentimes, I'm sitting there and I'm almost in wonderment as I see them carry forth and go on with their student-driven learning. So I'm very passionate, the kids are passionate, I feel very fortunate to be in a one-to-one classroom.
When you walk into Brian's classroom, it takes a minute to find Brian, because, you know, normally when you think about a teacher, you think about the person standing up front, the board's behind them in there, and they're addressing the whole class. When you go into Brian's class, the way stations are set up, the way the students and their devices are set up, sometimes you're wondering, like, "Where's Brian?" And all the kids are busy, and he's maybe working with a small group in the corner, or they're off, on their devices, communicating with other sixth-grade classes in the district. But that's, it's showing you where 21st century learning boundaries are, that the walls of the school have come down, and the learning can take off in many different facets, and it's, it's more likely to see kids doing different things in the room than everybody kind of marching to the same tune at the same time.
And the future of learning also is creating and producing. As you can see here, we have Anderson Student on your left, and she's actually creating an Android app. So there, I don't know if you've paid attention to this particular element or not, but coding is a big trend. Coding teaches lots of great skills to kids, and there's an hour of code actually coming up next week where they try to get as many schools as possible to participate in one hour of coding. It's pretty neat stuff. It teaches perseverance, it teaches lots of different skills to, and logical reasoning, lots of things to kids. So we have that happening right here at Forest Hills. We also have some programming happening at Turpin, but I happen to have an Anderson photo here. As you can also see, we have art and music. So even though technology lends itself to tons of creation, those type things are also creation. Engineering classes and architecture, kids interested in that type stuff, your 3D printing is going to start becoming very important. They can create prototypes of their models, different things like that, so we're getting into those emerging technologies.
Sometimes when people hear one-to-one, they're automatically just thinking, "A kid's coming into a classroom, looking at your computer and staring at your screen all day." And we want to just convey here that that's not what it's about. It's really about moving students from just being consumers of information to producing, to creating, and always having the right tool to get you there. It doesn't mean it's always a computer, it could be a paintbrush, it could be that instrument that you're looking at. But what the technology does is it allows you to get outside and talk to the, to talk to experts who maybe play that violin, who can give that student feedback on, on how she's producing the, the music that she has created. And that's what has not really been available before, because it's been very teacher-directed, and this is more student-centered.
And we're also looking at technology such as Circle, where you can actually go out, put a post out that you have a need, you're getting ready to do a lesson on a particular subject, are there any experts that'd be willing to talk to our students? And we've had that happening at our elementary as well as all the way up to our high school. So it's, it's a really exciting time, and the kids are just not consumers anymore, they're really creators of their learning, so it's pretty exciting. Go ahead, next one.
And Forest Hills, we've recently joined the Ohio Blended Learning Network, and what that's doing is hooking us up with other teachers, other educators throughout the state and beyond, to really understand what does it mean to build, to bring the brick-and-mortar school together and merge with the online learning environment, meta with this hybrid of this blended sense. And so there's lots of research that's being done in terms of best practices, and what we've done is hired a consultant to work with us to help us understand what are all these elements. And that graphic is a little bit complicated, and we're going to, we're going to go into real detail with it maybe in the next couple months to talk about each element. Right now, I just want you to comment on how do we bring the outside world into our brick-and-mortar schools and make the learning that can happen online anytime, at a student's own pace or at their instructional level, and when is it best to be working with a teacher with direct instruction, when is it best to be working with a student, or with another group of students? So it's figuring out, what is the best way to make all this kind of mesh together, so it's not like, well, you have to, your only option is you can take online classes by leading Forest Hills School District and getting an online institute, or you stay in Forest Hills and you have teachers leading classes, and every seven periods you change to a new class. This is the idea of bringing those two worlds together in ways that opens up opportunities you've just never been able to experience in education. We have two particular teachers, one here, Pete Wang at Turpin. He's starting with the element called flipped classroom, and you've maybe heard of that before. That's where the homework time is being spent on the teacher lecture or understanding the notes from the day, or getting the crux of the material that a student needs to know, and that's what's happening at home. When you come into school, you're, you open up the opportunity then for processing that information, to applying it, maybe in a lab situation, or teachers or students are able to debate one another with, with teacher input. And what Pete references a lot is just the, it takes the teacher off the center stage and brings all kinds of communication and kind of pushback with kids interacting with each other in ways that when you're, when you're sitting in the classroom environment, those kinds of discussions don't take, take flight sometimes. And so it's, it's being able to promote different resources out to kids and change how time is used in a high school. And he's had a lot of success with this. We've had, we did positive feedback from students, and this is just one element that he's still addressing the standards that he needed to before, he's still doing assessments that he before, but he's using time differently in his class. We also have at Anderson, another example of We also have at Anderson, another example of Louise Keep working, and Kristi's going to talk a little bit about this, but before we go into it, I just want to point out that we have a group of cohort of teachers at Anderson, a cohort of teachers at Turpin, and then a small group working at Nagel on developing, what does blended learning look like in Forest Hills? What do we believe about it, and what can we see in the future? And they're working very hard, meeting about once a month to really understand it and then to kind of set the vision and the tone for the rest of the district to catch on. So we're very proud of their work and their passion behind this, and they're willing to kind of step out. Here we live in this age in education where taking risks are, it's something that's harder to do than ever because you're worried about, what's your evaluation going to be? What are the test scores going to be? And there's all this pressure for accountability. And these teachers are stepping outside of this, saying, "Let's do what's best for kids. Let's maximize the use of the technology that we have available, and let's create something innovative here in Forest Hills." So we're very proud of their work.
Absolutely. And we don't have it all figured out yet. As Natasha said, we're kind of having a methodical process to learn about, what does that look like for us? It doesn't look like it looks like for everybody else. We're going to find our own way and look at our own method moving forward. The future of learning is rigorous. As she mentioned, Louise Keep. But one of the things that I found phenomenal about what she had said, she said that students are more successful, yet they are working less instead of more because she's flipped her classroom, because she's able to help do the problem-solving during the day. They're able to do exercises and projects and things to enrich the experience, not just her lecturing. And I know it's taking extra time for the teacher, but it appears to be paying dividends. She said at first, everybody didn't like it, and you guys have all those responses listed, the blended learning, what did I call it? Blended learning feedback. Yes, that's there for you to read, but essentially, what I love about this, she's an AP teacher. So for kids to recapture time is significant. If they have a full load of AP classes, if we can help them to not tax themselves so much that, you know, they're making themselves sick, which sometimes can happen, this is really phenomenal. So we're very excited to be looking at those types of endeavors.
And the key that these teachers are exploring with is really the personalization. It's figuring, how can kids do things at their own pace, at their own time, in ways that we haven't really been able to do without the technology? And it's really opening up doors for our students and our teachers.
And the future of learning, obviously, as you know a lot, you've heard, online assessment. We've kind of gone into that, journeyed into those, and there's a purpose to them. Even though sometimes they get a bad rep, the reality of it is, we need evidence. We need to know that they know what we're trying to teach them, how we can help them, what are the gaps, what are the weaknesses? That's what it's about. And technology allows you to do quick, little formative assessments along the way to figure out, did they get what I just taught them? I can test that in a couple of seconds, have it graded, and be done. You know, it shouldn't be punitive. It's really just to help us move them forward. Did you want to say anything else about online assessment? Okay. So this is the stuff normally I would have presented about in this type of presentation. It's how do we get here? So this is kind of a timeline, and as you can see, technology is on your left, and then personalized learning and new generation of learning is on the bottom. And as you can see, the technology helps you to personalize, and that's an upward slope. So we have the tablet project, which you're familiar with. We had our wireless infrastructure. We went to BYOD. We started adding technology integrationists or digital learning specialists at the secondary. They're to help teachers to integrate more effectively, and they're there supports every day in grade 712. We have digital curriculum resources, so we've invested in online text to help students be able to do that, not carry those heavy books in their backpacks, accessible anytime. Tech Squad, we've added support where the kids are actually learning how to support the devices in grades 712. We require computers 712 this year for the first time, and I'm happy to say 75% BYOD. That is significant, and that is grade 712. Every single building is plus or minus 1% of 75%. Very significant. And one-to-one Chromebooks, this is also the first year that we are officially one-to-one in grades three through six. Also a significant endeavor, and as you remember, Brian Devine mentioned how he was using it, and it's really helped them tremendously. And in lieu of that, we have three-through-six focused professional development. Carrie Herod is going around to all the elementary. She's investing time in helping the teachers. She goes in, helps them move through, and you guys also have digital roadmaps. We kind of have a pathway. You identify where you are, and this helps you to learn where you need to go. And blended learning, as Natasha just mentioned, we have a pilot of that happening. So we're testing different types of teaching and learning, and then the digital roadmaps, as I just mentioned. So what's next? The goal's one-to-one pre-K through two. We are not that far. The fact that we are one-to-one, grades three through 12, the odds are really good that we can hit the lower levels, and I'm really excited about moving forward with that. For those levels, at kindergarten for next year, we're trying to get to a three-to-one. First grade and second grade, two-to-one. So that's the ratio we're trying to get to for the next academic year. Improved infrastructure, obviously with the bond issue, we're going to work on improving our infrastructure. We'll put those access points that we just have plugged in the wall. We'll get those mounted, and we'll get things cabled properly and other things that we haven't been able to do so far. And pilots, as I mentioned, you know, with blended learning, as we learn new ways to do things, we'll pilot those things. We're not just going to go and have the entire district try something. We're just going to try small pockets, see if it works, see if it's effective, see if the teachers like it, and then move on from there. Flexible learning equipment and furniture, as our old furniture is bad and worn, then we need to start infusing the flexible furniture. It's really conducive to learning and those flexible learning environments. The same thing with equipment. We've been blessed enough that teachers for the past eight or nine years have had laptops. It's almost unheard of, really, that back then, everybody had a laptop. Almost everybody had a desktop, so Forest Hills is really bleeding edge on that. Future focus, obviously, we always want to do that. I feel that our job as a central office team is really to keep an eye on where things are moving so that we can help everybody in the building also to understand those things and to help them implement whatever they wish to do. And more digital citizenship. One of the things that we've noticed is, with more technology, of course, comes kids going in places they shouldn't be going, breaking devices, not caring for things properly. Those are the things that we need to work on. We need to work on educating them how to stay safe and how to not get themselves in compromising situations, things like that. So that's always going to be an ongoing journey for us.
One of the things recently that, you know, every time we look at this timeline and look at where we want to go, we feel like we're climbing huge mountains and we're just, oh, it's taking us forever, and we're kind of impatient with it at times. But some feedback I got recently in talking to some technology experts in the region, they're saying that really, there are people that are back at step one here in neighboring districts. And this gentleman was actually saying, "You guys, of course, you're like five or six years really ahead of where other schools are at this time." And that was really encouraging to me because we often are looking at the mountain we're trying to climb and not really celebrating the progress that has been made. And what's so exciting about the new technologies is that it is new to all of us. We had a group of teachers recently attend GAY Summit, it's Google Apps for Education. And these teachers came back so excited about this opportunity, and they're kind of like the, in the learner seat right next to the students. And that's what's exciting about what's changing in education, is being able to learn among your students and to make exciting things happen together.
And then lastly, I just want to top this off with something we just learned today is that Forest Hills is actually listed on the U.S. Department of Education Technology Education site. We are one of seven districts being recognized as a case study for connected professional development. So that's a pretty cool thing. I mean, the fact that we made it there is definitely something that's truly exciting. So the link is there if you wanted to look at it. Unfortunately, I'm on a video. But at any rate, that concludes the presentation, so I'm open for questions, as Natasha. You just looked at her and clapped.
I'm looking at you, too. No, I just, what I want to say is that I'm so happy that the levy's over, and I thank everybody for voting yes. And one of the criticisms we got was how that was never going to, wasn't addressing 21st-century learning. And I'm assuming that you started this five or six years ago and not November 5th, correct?
Correct.
Right. So I just very pleased to see the two of you working together and to see what we've accomplished and where we're going, and, you know, very excited about what we've done and the base that we're on.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Seventy-five percent.
Yes.
The other 25% are they accessing devices here?
And they're taking them home.
Right.
Yes.
And then the pre-K to two, do we expect those little kids to bring in devices, or is it going to always be? Because I know we had discussions before about ability of children at different levels to take care of their own things, or we hook them up when they're in here.
Well, and actually, grades three through six, we are providing our device, and they stay here.
Okay.
So we definitely thought the care and, you know, being able to care for that, take that to and from home, we didn't think that was a good idea. So we're providing, and as we do pre-K through two, we'll provide that as well. So, and it'll stay onsite.
And we're looking at different devices that are appropriate for that age level, right? Like iPad, tablet kind of devices. Thank you.
No questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ten years ago, when I first came on board, we didn't even have a policy as to which, whether it was an Apple or a PC by building, and they were making their own decisions. So you guys have brought us a long way. And to be a nationally-recognized school district, that's terrific. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Item 7.1, we have the budget hearing as required by Ohio law as well as our organizational meeting. We're looking at the date of January 5th, 2015. What are we doing at, at 7:00 in the morning? Is that right?
Yep.
Yes? So if we can have a motion to approve the budget hearing and organizational meeting for January 5th, 2015 at 7:00 AM?
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bessinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes.
Mr. Hemmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Prun.
Yes. Item 7.2, Board of Discussion. Anything anyone cares to discuss?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments, actually, they're follow-ups on what have already been made. It's on the bond issue. To thank the community, also especially to thank the committee. A lot of people work very hard, very enthusiastic people who put in a lot of hours there to communicate to the community. We've got a lot of different opinions on what should be done in Forest Hills, and I think that's one of the things that makes Forest Hills great. And I really think that it helped us sharpen our focus and, like I said, focus in on just exactly, we've said what the projects were going to be, but help us focus in on what the plans will be. We did a great job of communicating to the community better than in the past, but I think we need to continue that. Dallas, you mentioned this earlier, and that's kind of where I was going, is I want to make sure that we do just as good a job before the election, after the election, on communicating, you know, what it is we're doing and the specific plans, and also making sure that we reach out to the community for those people who want to participate in the, what kind of teams did you call them?
Provision.
Vision teams?
Vision.
Okay. Make sure that that's open to everybody to participate. I know it's a limited number of people that can participate, but...
We'll also be having some forums along the way, some larger forums where people can, especially when we're looking at the design and for the new building in particular.
And I think we're all in agreement on that, but I really think that that'll be important to follow through and make sure we really do a good job of that. So other than that, I'd just say thanks for the support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Items 8.1 through 12.5 will be done as consent agenda items. Item 8.1, St. Joseph Orphanage Crisis Stabilization Program Educational Services Agreement. Ms. Ryan?
I'm out.
8.1 is a motion to approve the educational services agreement between St. Joe's Orphanage and this Forest Hills School District for the provision of educational services to St. Joseph Orphanage Crisis Stabilization Program, and that is shown in the attachment. There were a number of questions about this program. This agreement does outline an additional classroom for students requiring crisis stabilization services. This is a classroom that was transferred from the Northwest School District to the Ultra Press campus here in our school district, and all of the information is outlined in the agreement. Our council has assisted in the development of the agreement as well.
Thank you. Item 9.1, Ms. Adams?
Oh, Mr. Cameron.
Tricky.
Mrs. Adams had to run out to a seventh-grade choir concert, I believe. Item 9.1 is a motion to approve the supplemental book for English Language Arts as presented. This book has been under review at Central Office here since October 27th, the last Board of Education meeting. It is called Dare to Dream: 25 Extraordinary Lives. It's a nonfiction book for seventh-grade English Language Arts. Item 9.2 is another request for a supplemental book, and this is prior to requesting approval of the following book for ELA, grades 11 through 12. It's being presented to the Board of Education. This is a book for the creative writing elective class. It's called Bird by Bird by an author named Anne Lamott. It's about the process of creative writing and building your way through that. The supplemental book will be available for review in the Curriculum Department until the December 15th, 2014 Board of Education meeting, and then formal approval will be requested at the January 26th Board of Education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.1, Ms. Carnahan, the Human Resources Report, please.
Item A in 10.1 would be the retirement of Linda Laudner, 26 years with Forest Hills School District, currently serving as a fifth-grade teacher at Maddox. This is effective near the very end of our school year. Also, Mary Young, 24 years with Forest Hills as a bus driver, effective at the end of this month, retirement. We also see resignations. Item D would be a change of assignment. Item E, a change of salary. Item F, these are salary schedules for other support positions for the 15, 16, and 16, 17 years, and you do have exhibits for those. Item H, appointments. Please notice the first are classified staff with, those are probationary basis contracts, lifeguard, bus monitor. Item I, these are special services appointments, and these are 2014-15 school year. Let you take a moment to just look at those. Item J, on page four, would be the supplemental coaches and advisors, and you see again a number of these individuals, page four and five. Item K would be substitute personnel for 2014-15. We do have a bus driver, cook, custodian, par, professional health aide, and administrative assistant. And I will make a plea to anyone watching that we are looking for substitutes in all of those areas. So if you're interested in being a substitute, contact the HR department. And then also, since the last board meeting, there was a very minor change in staffing due to just some adjustments in bus routes, and it now stands at 778.68 FTE.
Thank you, Ms. Carnahan.
Can I ask you a question before I get to the floor, please? Do all the elementarys have running clubs, or is Boston the only one, or are there more than, is there more than one? And I didn't know what the pay position is until right now, so...
I'll be happy to address that. The running clubs were informally happening at the buildings in the past. However, when we took a look at the supplemental salary schedule over last school year and that the Board approved in July, we did actually add a supplemental for every elementary school to have a running club advisor. And we have hired most of those. I think there's still maybe a couple buildings who we don't have anyone hired yet, but, so every building will have one before running season starts.
Question. The other support position salary schedule, education, software project manager, database manager, are these substantially different? Are these new positions? I couldn't find any history.
The, we actually added the parent resource coordinator position. We brought this to you at the last meeting with the 14-15 contract year, and the 15, 16, and 16, 17. So that's really the only change from the past, was the addition of the parent resource coordinator.
Thank you.
Business Operations, 11.1, request to advertise for bid. Mr. Johnson?
Before I could start, I'd just like you to keep Mary Young and your thoughts and prayers, who's retiring at the end of the month. Her husband passed away yesterday. I don't know, so... First item is a motion to request the authorization for the Treasury to advertise for bids for the stated project, to request permission to advertise for bids for replacement up to five school buses. Our current appropriations now include two buses, but over the five-year forecast in years two through five, it's two, two, six, and five. We've applied for federal grant and we will know in December if we're awarded that grant. So if we get the grant, we're going to move several of those buses up to take full advantage of that and it'd be $100,000. Next item is a motion to approve the request for, to authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids for the stated projects, which would include renovations to cafeteria at Nagel, renovations at Turpin and Anderson High Schools, and partial roof replacement at Air Elementary. The Nagel project is going to be funded by the Food Service Fund, so it's not coming from the general fund. Funding for the renovations at Turpin, Anderson, and Air are being funded out of the established permanent improvement fund that had nothing to do with the recently passed bond. They're all projects that were on our radar and simply kind of moved up as several of the ones above that are being part of the bond project. And just as a reminder to anybody, that the turf replacement project at Turpin, which starts a week from today, will not be funded with tax dollars out of the general fund or permanent improvement fund. So the treasurer would recommend that the board approve the request to authorize the treasurer to bid for the stated projects. The next item is a payment in lieu of transportation. I brought this last month and I'm bringing it again this month. Literally 48 hours after the board approved it last time, we got another name to add to the list. So the board has to reapprove the list. So I'm just asking the board to approve the resolution of payment in lieu of transportation.
Thank you. Item 12.1, resolution. Mr. Tepfer?
Yeah, 12.1 is a required resolution certifying to the county auditors the amount of the property tax to be levied for the current bond issue that was passed. This allows them to collect the debt, pay the principal and interest beginning in 2015. So it's recommended the board adopt the resolution as listed in item 12.1. Item 12.5, as we have in previous years, it's a very formal tax budget, but the county allows us to use our five-year forecast, which is really what we use to manage day-to-day. So that requires all the districts in Hammond County to have their boards pass a modified tax budget. So that's what, item 12.2 is recommended the board adopt the resolution requesting authorities from Hammond County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget. We'll be working on those, working on now and actually provide those, an updated five-year forecast in December in the tax budget at the organizational meeting. 12.3 kind of is the details of the tax budget calendar, when required pieces are due. So it's recommended the board approve the 2015-16 tax budget calendar as listed. And item 12.4, we actually have two resolutions. One will be this month, one next month. They're both part of the district, assuming the self-insuring of workers' compensation. Item 12.4, we're asking the board to approve the renewal of our service agreement with our partner Sedgwick for the claims management as well as the unemployment compensation service agreement also with Sedgwick. This is the, just finished our third year of insuring our own workers' compensation claims. The estimated savings again are over $200,000, which is a little bit, I think it's more than that, but we, since we're not being billed, I'm using what I think is an estimate with, we would have been charged and so I've just kind of kept that flat, but it's over $600,000 for the three years. So everybody's working hard to manage that and to keep our workplace safe and obviously our claims down. So everybody shares in that benefit. So it's recommended the board approve the Sedgwick agreement listed in item 12.4. And the treasurer report in item A, we have the donations for October. Seven elementary's, the winner this month, have over $2,000 for two-way radios. Statement of board accounts, all the accounts are in good shape. We have one account that we're waiting on some Title II D funding, which is, which should be coming this month. Item C, we have our general fund receipts and D and E, our expenditures pattern. We're in line, we're a little bit, you know, almost a little bit over half a percent higher on our spending for this time of year. Nothing's really out of whack there in my mind. Item F, we have a monthly back reconciliation. Item G, our investments for the month. I have provided at your place the investment portfolio. We're using an estimate right now because obviously we're invested out, as you can see, up to three years and so we used an estimate of a little over 1% to provide what we believe is a fair interest earnings. Obviously, once those securities mature, we'll actually realize that interest and actually bring that to our financials. But I think we're in line with what the portfolio, we had hoped that we would be able to deliver and the money is invested appropriately tied to the five-year forecast, so hopefully we were on the way to positive interest earnings. Item H, we have our amendments to the appropriation. No change to our general fund, overall small decrease. I, we're closing, asking the board to approve the closing of a student activity account. Item J, transferring funds, an annual transfer from FY14 federal auxiliary service funds to FY15 federal auxiliary service funds. And a couple of updates. One, as I said, we'll be working on the five-year forecast. We did get our new tax duplicate, so we now have new revenue numbers that will match with our five-year forecast expenditures, looking positive there as well. So we hope to bring a five-year forecast in December. We will bring a five-year forecast in December. Bond financing plan and timeline, I left a tentative draft at your place. Things are moving along there. The one update, if you kind of look out in the middle, or I should say the end of January, Dallas Ray and I and preferably a board member would go with us to Chicago to present to our rating agencies, we'll know more details as we come, as we're working through that presentation material now. It's an opportunity to improve our bond rating, which it's pretty good now. Obviously, this is an opportunity to get face-to-face and we have a good story to tell. So I think that's something to kind of just be planning and we'll talk more about that when it gets a little closer. And lastly, we have, our state auditors will be with us for a while, starting the 1st of December. It's recommended the board approve this report as well as all the consent items, 8.1 through 12.5 as presented.
I mean, do we approve items 8.1 through 12.5?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 13.1, Business Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Tepfer?
No meeting since the last board meeting, but we do have one scheduled for Monday, 12/1 at 7:00 PM, talking about our financial audit, investment management, healthcare reform, and our bond issue financing. So we have some topics there to talk about.
Thank you. Item 13.2 is the Forest Hills Foundation for Education Report. There was a meeting on November 12th, which I attended. The foundation reported on, and the All-In Donation Drive, which was a canned food drive in which all of the schools actively participated and they secured more than 10,000 items for the canned food drive for the benefit of interparish ministries. So that was a huge success. Work has begun on the 2015 Forest Hills 5K. That'll be on May 9th, 2015. The foundation this year is sponsoring 18 Destination Imagination Teams. I don't think they've had anything close to 18 in the past, so that's really growing quite a bit and that's really good news. All of the elementary's are participating, Nagel is participating, and the hope is as these kids continue to work their way through the schools, we will have high school Destination Imagination Teams in the next year or two. So hopefully that's the way that works out. The Distinguished Alumni Luncheon was a huge success. It was a little bit different format and it seemed to work very well. I know a lot of you attended. And then just two weekends ago was the soiree for success at the beautiful home of Lorraine and Joe Marinick. It was just a wonderful event. We thanked the Marinick so much for their hosting of that event. And that's the report. Item 13.3, the Legislative Liaison Report. Randy?
Since the election, the State House has been very busy. Both the House and the Senate are, I guess you could say scrambling to wrap things up before the end of the year. They're in somewhat of a, you could call it a lame duck session. I want to report on three things. The first one is Common Core, that continues to be a hot item in Columbus. Obviously, that is a very, very complex issue. There are at federal level, state level, local level, there are control issues, financial issues, time invested by our district issues, testing issues, and oh, by the way, student issues. We've had some discussion about this in the past and I suspect we will continue to have discussion. And I've expressed my concern over that particular item, especially at the federal level. Anything that's a half a step away from the federal government taking over, I have a concern with and I think others share that. But we are where we are and my, I met with both our current legislator and our future legislator and expressed a concern that we need, whatever happens, we need to have a glide path to whatever the next step is. And that's what I'm, expressed my concern that we need that because if we make a change, I think we, Forest Hills started preparing for our current curriculum about three years ago. It's not something that you can turn on a dime. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dallas, or any of the administrators that are still here, but it took a significant amount of investment of time, money, and resources. And so that was my message to our legislators, is that we need a glide path to whatever's next. And don't leave us hanging and don't leave our students hanging. Second thing, there are a number of bills that are in the House Education Committee. They did pass two. One of them, by the way, this is just the bill passed out of the House, it's not law. House Bill 28 would make changes to the limit, the amount of time students spend on testing to four hours per year, per subject, per grade level, with a few exceptions. The second thing is a bill committee passed by, it's House Bill 343. This proposes several changes to assessments, including how biology and physical science is to be used, requiring districts to give third grade reading Ohio Achievement Assessments to all third graders, a number of other things. There are also two other bills that I wanted to mention. Sub-House Bill 228. There are 10 points in that particular bill, I'm not going to go through them. The other one is a subbill to, House Bill 343. There are 49 different points that impact education in there. This is not the Board of, the State Board of Education doing this. This is not the Department of Education. This is our legislature. And I think it's just interesting that they're getting into that much detail and that much legislation and all of these things will eventually impact, well, most of them will impact Forest Hills at some point. The third thing I wanted to comment on was the five-of-eight rule that the State Board of Education was looking at. The point is that will actually not impact our district. At least that's what I understand, correct? So even though I know that got a lot of attention, it doesn't change anything that we will be doing in Forest Hills. And again, please correct me if I don't have that right, Dallas.
You're correct, Randy. The five-of-eight is an old piece of requirements from the Ohio Department of Education where school districts are required to have five pieces or five pieces in place in regards to education. It's, and, which includes a lot of different things. Counseling, services, different arts, musics, those types of things in place. And we have no desire or whatever to go down that road in regards to changing any of our programs that we have here at Forest Hills.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report, Randy. Appreciate that. Policy Committee Report. Julie?
Sure. Earlier this fall, we met to talk about the policies that you see in 13.44. A lot of the policies are legally mandated policies, but we do have some options that we can pick. Just so, to refresh your, you know, the process, we get these policies, they are looked at by the appropriate person in central office. Randy and I then go through them, then we meet as a committee and the committee consists of a representative from New York, and Dallas, and Susan Monk, and Randy, and myself. And then once in a while, someone from the administration comes at our request. So they are, they're well vetted. We have some really good discussions. I really, editorial column, I really enjoy that meeting. We do good work there, I think. So they're before you tonight for approval for the second reading.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just add a comment real quick?
Sure.
It's interesting to me that the vast majorities are required, legislated, whether it's the Board of Education, the legislature, or whoever. And so we do go through these and sometimes we have some options that we try and look at.
Personalizing towards.
In what's, yeah, in our district's best interest, but it's just, so much of this is just required.
Right, and that's where that subscription to the service really makes all the difference in the world. Be awfully hard to, to stay on top of it without that. And then 13.5, we have a first reading on some additional policies.
Before we go to the first reading, going back to 13.4, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the policies that are in front of you for that second read so that we can get them into.
Do you want us to vote on those right now then? Yes.
Oh, all right, I'm with you.
I will move that then. I will move that we approve the policies in item 13.4.
All right. Mr. Tepfer?
I didn't get a second.
Oh, second.
Sorry. Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
And then 13.5 is a first reading of the policies that are attached and those are affiliated to our group hall plans in the school district.
Right. Right. 13.6 was supposed to be the SAGA report. We were all at the Capitol Conference and none of us attended the SAGA meeting and I did not receive an independent report of what happened at that meeting, so we don't have a SAGA report today unless somebody else knows what happened at the meeting. No. All right. And then item 14.1? Yes?
Pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121, point 22G1, I hereby move that the Board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, or licensed student. And pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121, 22G5, I hereby move that the Board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering matters required to be kept confidential by our federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on December 15th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. We don't expect to take up anything further after executive session. Thank you all for coming.